USA. So you're not really sure where that is coming from. As of April 8th, we had 75 schools in the 201 school districts that are serving USB from a USDA inspected processing facility here in North Dakota. Some of the local schools in our area that are participating, we have Ashley, Barrow Public, Zeeland, Bismarck Secondary Schools, Wapton, Wishig, Ellendale, Peter County, Medina, Linton, Northern Cass, Pinkberry Buchanan, and Stroudsburg. This program allows a school to continue to get a beef packaged in the manner that it's already accustomed to, so that wouldn't change. South 40 is willing to provide North Dakota beef in five and 10 pound tubes, fresh or frozen, for $3.79 per pound delivered weekly, bi-weekly, or monthly, and that delivery is free. One of the things we all know, unfortunately, in our economic times, is that food costs are predicted to go up, and commodity food items probably will be harder to get. So one of the things that might be of concern is that, you know, it's going to be harder to get some of those items that you've already been getting, and definitely that cost will go up. Maybe using commodity dollars for those hard-to-get items, and then maybe getting your beef through the South 40 processing facility might be an option when you're looking to cut costs when those commodities go up. On the back page, and as I said earlier, most of this information comes from Deb at EPI. She was very helpful, very willing to, you know, give any information on this program and why they support that. So she confirmed that commodity beef was at $4.09 a pound plus 15 cents per pound for the warehouse shipping and fuel surcharges. So the cost for December, January, and February was $4.24. One of the things that she found out is that the schools that have utilized this program already, they've stated that the beef that comes from South 40 yields at least 10% more than what's coming off the truck. By getting kids a quality beef product, we might get the 140 students that aren't eating free meals to try it. That would be 140 more lunches times 456, which is $638.40 per day, for $12,768 for a 20-day month, and that would quickly add up for the year. On the email below, that's from South 40, and they're willing to contract for the 2223 school year for $3.79 per pound delivered to the school. And then he talks about you can get it in the five to 10 pound tubes, and that is fresh or frozen and no charge for. And he is very open to anyone calling him, asking him questions on how this works. The same with Deb at EPI, they're kind of working close together, so. All right. Thank you. Any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just want to thank Kasia for presenting us this information, and this is, it looks like a great program for me. Really think we should go forward with trying to utilize it at our school. We see by the community support that there's a lot of people that are behind us. It just looks like it's a win all around the district.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Kasia and Dylan, for your persistence and your good information. As mentioned, we do have a test of this scheduled soon, or I don't know if it's scheduled, but it's happening soon.
It'll be coming in as soon as we run out of the hamburger from the lot of these in the kitchen.
All right.
So I just have to set up the delivery date. I've been in talks with them for several months now already over at South 40 Beef.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Yes. Was there a deadline on that, Kasia, when you had to sign up for that to get that price?
No, he told me that it would stay that as long as they can afford to keep it at that because of whatever. If schools are locked in at that price, that's what my email was from South 40 Beef.
Anything else? If not, thank you everyone for your presentation, your research, and your questions this morning. Next, we'll call on who's representing the music department, the music trip. All right, Ms. Neal.
So this music trip has been going on since roughly about the 2000s. And they've traveled to St. Louis, Six Flags, New York, DC, all of the above. Today I've come to you about getting approval for the music trip. As a band and choir, we collectively decided that we would be interested to go to New York. And we've been, our Mr. Lean's been in contact with one of the companies based in Sioux Falls. And some of the information that this trip would contain would be like the cost per student, which would be $1,250. And this trip entails four nights, a Broadway show, like workshops, and it would just be a great experience overall for students. Like I said, this has been going on since the 2000s, so it's been a, like, a long thing that's been going on. Not only is it a great experience, but as Oaks, we can represent Oaks and the state of North Dakota when we go and do these things. Anybody else want to do anything to add?
Just that, so a wonderful tradition that I believe Sue German and Kathy Kay started quite a while ago. And when they began it, it was just the band that started, and then they had such a wonderful time the first time, thought it was so enriching for the students, and had great opportunities to work with professional musicians in their environment, in the professional field, that they decided, why not bring choir kids as well? And so they brought the entire department on the next trip and tried to make it every four-year things, that each generation of music students would be able to go on a music trip and be able to work with those professionals in the field, out in their environments, and get some opportunities to perform on bigger stages for larger crowds. So this is an opportunity that we'd love to present to the board, hopefully for approval, along with staying with tradition of this trip, as it has occurred in the past. And there's been some planning and fundraising that has been done for that already to this point. And if you have any questions about details that I have so far, I'd be happy to reply to it.
So the question I have, just for clarity, I believe this is proposed for next spring.
Right, yeah, summer of 2023.
And the four nights, that's four nights total or four nights in New York?
Four nights lodging, the way that they stated it, I believe it would be a five-day trip with four nights in total.
Is this something where they get the opportunity to get together with other schools, or is this something that is just Oaks, not schools?
We can absolutely plan for that as well, other schools can do some high school exchanges in the area. That's something that we can add to the itinerary. There's really nothing set in stone. There's just been a proposal from the companies that have ideas for places we can go, things we can do, and possibly schools we could interact.
All right. Any other questions? So this was, is an action item today, and it is our policy, our board policy, that any out of state or longer than 300 or 400 miles, I guess, is, the board is required to act on it and approve before the trip is taken. And so that is why we are taking action on this today, and because it's a full year away, this will allow for the planning and the fundraising necessary to do this trip. So is there a motion then to approve the music trip for the spring, summer, spring of 2023? Nagel moves the approval of the music trip. Is there a second? Heinbach seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Thank you. Who is representing archery today?
Everybody's doing good this morning. I had the honor and privilege of coaching three groups, elementary, middle school, and the high school teams that stayed, and they all won. They did a very good job this year. So they have qualified for the national tournament in Sandy, Utah, which is at the end of this month. Right now, we have 47 kids from Oaks going. Four coaches, so we were asking for permission from the board to be able to be on this trip, April 29th and 30th.
Hey, any questions for members? What's the plans for travel out there?
This year, we've kind of just made it out for a lot of the kids just to go. So we got donations, well, each group, each team that wanted to stay got three grand per team. And then we got donations from London Sports and Club, and we're going to do some fundraising to pick money for the trip. Each kid will get, you know, certain money for the trip.
So they'll be traveling with their own parents?
Yeah, yeah. And there's, well, we have a group of parents that have a band for extra kids, in case they, you know, need rides. I think there was seven or eight of them that came to go. It's kind of nice having parents, you know, help out and get things organized for us for fundraising and for, you know, getting other kids there and the carpooling our way down there.
All right. Any other questions? Again, this requires board approval, so is there a motion to approve the archery trip for April 29th and 30th at the end of this month? Rosen Dell moves to approve the archery trip. Is there a second?
Second.
Heinbach seconds. Is there any discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes, and the archery trip is approved. Thank you. Congratulations and good work on all the continued winning in the archery. All right, we'll move on then to the administrative reports. Those were in your packets. Is there anything that anyone wanted clarified? Any questions? Anything?
Yeah, a couple. So on the food service report, this kind of ties in with our presentation that we just had about the food items being hard to source, and so I just think it just makes sense that if we have this, if we're already having issues sourcing items and costs keep going up, that we can utilize the North Dakota Beef Program and start using some of our commodity dollars to purchase other items that are available through the North Dakota and the federal commodity programs. Yeah, like I said before, a good win for the school all around.
Makes sense to me. Any other questions or comments on the kitchen report, technology, maintenance and transportation, activities director, principals reports, or the superintendent's report? Anything you want to highlight specially this morning?
The only thing is, before I wrote this, the storm wasn't predictive, and so just in case something does happen, that maybe something to look at is, do we want to change how we're attacking or looking at our storm days? Do we want to continue with the, I know at one meeting before, it was mentioned, we tried to stay away from the eLearn days. So I'm just checking to see if that's, thoughts have changed on any of that or anything like that, still to continue to follow similar protocols as best.
I think you have a question for, um, on that training you did, the safety trip. How many staff members will be trained in that?
So we're starting next Tuesday with all of our specialist staff, the parents and the teachers. And not everybody will be trained in holds. Most of it will be in de-escalation. Just a few will be trained on holds because that, we just don't want that to be our, we'll be going to right away. Yeah, so we'll be trained in de-escalation, but otherwise our plans are that the entire staff will be trained in de-escalation, K-12, but that'll come in the fall, so Tracy's working with us on those days. So we have plenty of trainers. Most we can train at a kind of 10, but there were 10 of us at that training, so if we divide and conquer, you know, the part of it is I have to go to other schools to train their staff too, so then we should have a staff that's probably trained in taking care, so we can de-escalate. Hopefully, we won't get to those holds or those kinds of tortures or anything like that.
Thank you. Right. Any other questions or comments on the administrative reports?
I had a question about the library para. Just wondering why we're referencing the legalities of the library in that, since we were talking about the library para.
I was just making a reference that it was legally not even needed.
I guess my understanding is that for accreditation, that we do need a librarian, so.
That's why I'm recommending not going away from the library.
I just didn't know why that wasn't a question, so.
All right. Any other questions, comments on the administrative reports? If not, is there a motion to approve the administrative reports as presented? Nagel moves to approve the administrative reports. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Thorc seconds. Is there any discussion? Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes, and the administrative reports are approved. The next item on the agenda is the action items, the election site and polling hours. As we, a month or two ago already, we were required to, and we did set the election date for Tuesday, June the 7th, 2022. And now we are required to set the polling place and times. I guess for other districts, in other districts, there are lots of options for places, and so this is sort of a formality for us, but it's my understanding that 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM is, or is it eight hours or a specific time?
The latest they can open is 11:00, and then the latest, or the earliest they can open is 7:00. Hopefully, just make the shortest window.
Yes, so the shortest legally required window of time, and again, we'll be hiring three or four for election board members who will be paid to staff. And of course, absentee ballots or mail-in ballots are available and can be used prior to the election. So with that, is there a motion then to approve the Oaks School Central Office Conference Room as the location and the polling time from 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM? Heinbach moves to approve the school election details. Is there a second? Nagel seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is an open enrollment. A family from the Ellendale Public School District has applied for open enrollment. They have four children with the oldest entering kindergarten next year. We typically do not publicly announce the names of the families as we act on them, but we would need a motion to approve this open enrollment application, and it is a family application, so it would apply to all children as they become school age unless applied to be revoked by the family, I believe. So is there a motion to approve that open enrollment application? Nagel moves to approve the open enrollment application. Is there a second?
So second.
Thorc seconds. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Staffing, we do have one resignation in our packet. Mr. Colt Lean, who has been with us for two years in our music department, has written to notify us that he has accepted a new teaching position and will be resigning at the end of this school year, so we do need to approve that so we can officially open the position. Is there a motion to approve Mr. Lean's resignation? Rosen Dell moves to approve. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Thorc seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. The resignation is approved, and please accept our thanks for your work here and hope you have grown as you started your job here as a new student, so a new teacher right out of school, and thank you for your efforts, and good luck to you.
Thank you.
New teacher contracts in your packet. We have hired an doctor as a high school English teacher, and Kylie Weber as a kindergarten teacher. We do need to approve those contracts, so is there a motion to approve those two new teacher contracts?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thorc moves to approve the new teacher contracts. Is there a second?
A second.
Heinbach seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion?
I probably should have brought this up during the reports, but I forgot. So we're going away from hiring that second elementary teacher. And how many applicants did we have for that position?
Two.
For that one?
For elementary.
We had two applicants for kindergarten, correct?
Yes.
And two for the other position as well?
There was, we just opened it all at one, elementary.
We have a second, right? Second, for the motion, I mean. Right. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes, and those two new teacher contracts are approved. All right, and so then the next item on the agenda is 2022-23 teacher contracts. And, okay, so there's a big spreadsheet in our packet, and this is just everyone else. We're just proving everyone else here. All right, so in your packet, and is there some significance to the highlighted items? All right. So in your packet, and what is there some significance to the highlighted items? Yep. Oh, I see. Yep. Okay, so. All right. In your packet, there is a list of all of the teaching positions. Two at the bottom have no names on them, and those are the two that we just approved, the kindergarten and the high school English. So the two remaining open after approval of this, of this spreadsheet of these teaching contracts would be high school science and high school music. Are we also, okay, down at the bottom, there are admin contracts and we are also approving those. All right. So I'm asking for a motion for approval of all of the contracts listed on the spreadsheet. Nagel moves to approve the contracts. Is there a second?
Second.
Rosendahl seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. And the contracts are. Already done the music trip and the archery.
Oh, wait, we have a policy review.
Oh, right. I don't know that this item really needs action, but I'm seeking a volunteer school board member to hand out diplomas at graduation. I've done it several times. I handed the diploma to both of my sons. It's a privilege and it's exciting. Anybody has a niece or a nephew or a friend, or your kids' friends, I encourage you to volunteer to do this. It's fun.
I would love to, but I have a niece and nephew graduating.
Oh, shoot. Do I have to appoint someone? All right. Well, we'll be for action on that. Okay, school policy review in your packets. There were, you did not have any first readings, did not even came in at the last minute.
No, I checked last night.
Okay.
You sound disappointed.
Then the next, next month we'll have 12. Okay. So all we have before us are the four that we have first readings last month. So we have policy ABAV, school year and calendar. This is a recommended policy. We last acted on it in September of 2019 and there are just minor changes to reflect state law. The other three policies are required policies. One, GCC, Protection of Pupil Rights Amendments. We last acted on it in July of 21. It's updated to reflect federal law. And I believe this is one that we had to decide what was private information or am I confused? That's a different one.
Someone's more surveys. I think this saw a lot of the legal update.
Yeah. And when, when they're required and they're reflecting federal law and administrative rules, I'm kind of just saying, well, I guess that's what we have to have. And the last two are HBAA and HCAA, Federal Fiscal Compliance and Purchasing, which are updated per guidance from DPI and federal law. And HCAA was changed from recommended to now a required policy. Is there a motion to approve second reading and final approval of these four policies? Nagel moves to approve. Is there a second? Heimbuck seconds. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes and the policies are approved. There are no first readings today. How are we doing April on, was it a year ago? Maybe, maybe even two years ago, we received that whole packet of a comprehensive review from School Boards Association. Are we, have we gotten through all of that?
We went through all of that. The only thing I left to do is like clean up, like some of them where they don't have the complementing documents. It's in need for approval to remove or change some of those. So yeah, it's just some housekeeping stuff that we have left to do over that.
Very good. All right. With that, then we'll move on to approval of the minutes of the March 8th meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Heimbuck moves to approve. Is there a second? Rosendahl seconds. Is there any discussion? Any corrections needed, corrections needed or additions? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes and the minutes are approved. Moving on to financial reports, the reconciliation report, the balance sheet and the revenue and expense report, we typically act upon in a single motion. Were there any questions or anything that needs to be clarified on the reconciliation, the balance sheet or the revenue and expense report?
Just curiosity, what's the 450 to North Dakota State?
Small organized schools.
Small organized schools.
Oh, okay.
Well, same with workforce, same to you.
Mine, I gave just April this morning, just the overall. When going through these, there wasn't that many categories that were a high percentage of over budget. But when I looked at the preliminary budget for next year, things don't look nearly as good as they have in the past. And even for finishing all this year, it looks really bad. Even on top of the summer project. And that's what I was trying to figure out what's is causing this. If a lot of the percentages are not over budget.
Comments?
The only thing I can think of is that the SIR dollars that are supposed to be offsetting some stuff is, is not correlating. That's the only thing I can guess of at this point.
So typically, what I, what I've noticed is that at near the end of the year in June, grant dollars and and there's lots of that this year, right? Yep. They, they, they get moved and they get applied to all of the appropriate accounts. And I think too, we're also, we also have been aware from the beginning of the year that we are very likely going to be asking to transfer half of our special reserve, which is the most that we can. And that's, since I've been on the board, it's been 229,500 something dollars. So 230, so we'll be able, we will need to transfer about 115,000. Any other comments or feedback?
The, the SIR dollars, how is that going to affect the end of your budget? If we use them or not, is that the difference?
Yeah. So we have to expense them out and then request reimbursement. So depending on when it hits our, when we get our reimbursement, that's part of it too. But yeah, they have been encouraging, have they tried to do quarterly reimbursements? So we can try to keep up on that. So coming month will have more. But yeah. So let's say if we have to pay for something in June, you know, like $200,000, you know, equipment or something, that's a fun. The 200s won't be reversed until the next.
Sure.
And I'll try to make note of it. But I do have a list of stuff that Robert gave me. So I'll go through and I'll update everyone about these. And then I'll go through the budget again after the meeting and update after all these expenses.
But I mean, just, am I off the worry? No matter what. We're going to be like 500,000 less on our cash reserves than we have been.
You might be.
So I mean, it's not like, you know, a $10,000 or $5,000 transfer here or there.
And as the year gets.
Big dollars.
As we close the year, the numbers get a little bit burned up a little bit more, you know. I think we're going to be doing the, think we'll have another storm, you know, stuff like that. So we'll just keep working on trimming up those numbers.
And that's what I was asking about the SIR dollars. So if there's like, what, six, $700,000 sitting there?
Yeah.
So it's just a matter of when you do that.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right. Any, is there a motion to approve the reconciliation, the balance sheet and the revenue and expense reports? Rosendahl moves the approval of reconciliation, balance sheet and revenue and expense report. Is there a second? Nagel seconds. Now, any further discussion or questions? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Next, we'll have review of bills and I see there's one additional. Let's get bills on our table this morning.
I forgot to email it yesterday.
Is this travel reimbursement?
Yes. Oh, that's, that was another thing I wanted to comment. I would like to hear from the staff members about that trip. Can we get them on the, on the meeting next time? I think that'd be beneficial. I've seen, had all kinds of comments. I just kept them.
Who went on the Lindsay trip? Mr. Getz, Mr. Dobitz? Oh, it is. Okay. Shelby, Jolent, Ryan, Virginia. Next month, we will try to have a report from.
The one time I do want to make about the expenses is that, to kind of reiterate, Jared, so this month our food bill was $23,000. And I went back just curiosity of how much has went up and it's pretty much doubled since last year. So last year was 10,500 and then this April was 23, 682. And it's even jumped in the month. Because back in, just last month, our bill was only $10,000. So just in 30 days, that's how much it's changed with our food.
It could also play a factor. Just the food is one, the fuel is another one. It's going to start seeing, all these revenues are starting, or expenses are going to start increasing as, as we see our reflection of costs going up. So that, that might be part of it too. I'm not trying to push it off on the SIR, but yeah, April makes a great point. It's that we're, we're seeing some massive changes, just as everybody else is. Hope everybody realizes that how much it hits us here.
Now, that just correlates back to why, you know, when we have a, a North Dakota public education area DPI program that we should try to utilize that.
I've talked with L and D Superintendent on that. The prices are actually very comparable now. They, they went up with the, the North Dakota beef has gone up this. So just so you're aware that I've been checking with other super tax too. They, at least from what I've had reported on is that beef prices are very comparable. They're almost even now as far as what commodities versus, because commodities is set as a yearly price. They purchase all that and then they store it up in this marker fire wheel. I think it's part of where stores all that beef for the whole year. And then they distribute it out accordingly. So that price is set way back in July where the North Dakota beef has not been set this year. And so I know at least what I was told, the L and D Superintendent said that the prices are very comparable. They're almost equal to each other right now. That's without the delivery and the storage fees. So what, go back this again. So what do we need to do to go ahead with using local beef? I think our first thing is to try, try it out here in May and see. The other thing is, I mean, I think we don't want to jump too soon because our local butcher shop is also going to be taken over by somebody local. And I think that they would probably work with us as a school district if we were to go and talk to them and say, hey, here's what we're offered to pay commodities. Can you match it or beat it? I think that they would be, I'd much rather do it. So our patrons here are going to be a service.
Well, and I like that idea too, because then maybe some producers will donate beef as well.
Most definitely. We can.
It's easier to donate it to a local.
Right.
Process.
Through, through working with this, I mean, we can accept any donations of beef. We can accept any donations of vegetables, fruits, anything, all the way around. So if, if people are wanting to donate, that's another, another avenue we can look at and explore too. Especially if, it may be a good kickoff starter to, what, here's an introduction to our beef and just an all round maybe win for everybody. I was just curious what the process would be to do it. If we, is it a board thing or is it just something that? It'd be something at Jared's level would be the first entry. She does a lot of that. And that's her, she's our professional in that area. So we continue to work with her on that. And obviously show up with April and myself to make sure that we're getting where it needs to go to.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the bills as presented in our packets along with the half-page paper list we got this morning? I'll move. Heimbuck moves to approve the bills. Is there a second? Nagel seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Reminder that we have, we're all welcome to stay and encouraged to stay for the school, the classroom visits from 8:30. Oh, my goodness, 8:30.
You were supposed to drag this out a little bit.
It's kind of hard to start those early.
Yeah, we could go have breakfast. So our next regular meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, May 10th at 7:00 AM. The school board election is on Tuesday, June the 7th, as we acted on earlier. And then our, our June regular meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June the 14th. However, our, we're required by state law to meet. Now, it, we used to be six days. Now it's 13 days after the board elect, the school election in order to canvass the votes. And so I'm proposing that we would change the June meeting to June the 20th. That's a great proposal. Okay. Plus, I've been asked to work at the primary election and I would not really do that. So is, is there any objection to being, to moving our June meeting to the 20th? Okay. So we will move and, and.
Okay. All right. You can, but that sort of ran into last year. We did a Monday morning, 7:00 AM meeting and that's not a good plan.
Okay. So should we just do it in the evening?
Yeah.
What's wrong with you and Mondays?
That's when all the stuff that went wrong over the weekend, you have to rectify.
A PM, a PM meeting is okay. And we can discuss that again next month. But we'll, we'll say it's going to be a a PM meeting and, you know, maybe at the five or it's. But we have all the 7:00 AM.
Well, we could go to Tuesday there because there's more.
No. 13 days after the election, the task. It'll work.
We'll find a time.
So our regular June meeting will be held on the 20th with the time to be determined.
Yes.
All right. Any other points for the good of the order? Hey, we didn't cover, we didn't get a board member selected to hand out diplomas.
I think I've gone a bunch.
All right. All right. If there's nothing else to come before the meeting, I'll adjourn the meeting at 7:48 AM.